Now call this regular workshop meeting Jacksonville City Council to order. We have a proposed agenda at your place, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Boo for adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Next, we have adoption of the minutes and consent items. Minutes are from the February 16th, 2021 regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to adopt the minutes and consent items.
Second.
Discussion, hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, we'll start with our workshop topics, and first one tonight is the master plans for city parks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for some time this evening to discuss something Michael and myself and Dr. Woodruff and city management have been working on for a while. We're going to present to you about five parks tonight. It is something we've been working on since about 2020, and we'll probably have several of these workshops. So as we go through today, we want your input, we value your feedback, obviously. This isn't a final document. What we would like to do eventually is present to you a master plan that you agree with and you adopt. So without further ado, we'll just kind of get started. Okay, so we started our first master plan, our comprehensive master plan was in 2010. That was a pretty extensive plan, but there was a couple of things that did not do for us. You did accept it, but there were some things that we kind of have come back to about 10 years later. So some of the things it did not, we did do get public input meetings, we did have some classifications on all of the parks, and it did make some general recommendations. What we have come to realize is that for us to move forward for the next 10 years is we would really like to get into the nuts and bolts of each park, which is what we're going to do tonight. So basically, that's where, one thing that it did not do. So since about January 2020, shortly after some of the feedback we got with Florence, as you know, we did get some really good public input from Florence, we started the conversation about our master plan and moving forward with the parks' master plan. So in January of 2020, we had several public input meetings. One was at Jack Emmett Recreation Center, one was at the Commons Recreation Center, and we got some great feedback. We put all of the parks up on the walls, and the public was invited to come out and tell us what they would like. That really started this whole concept of what is it that we want in our parks, what is it that the public would like to see in our parks, and now we're coming to you with some of those ideas and what works comprehensively for the whole system. We have since also worked with our rec advisory board, so we have met with them on all of this. We've had several meetings with them, similar to what you'll hear, and we got their feedback, and we've incorporated those in tonight as well. So you'll see, hopefully, overall over the next couple of workshops, comprehensively all of our parks and some of those things that we would like to add in the next 10 years, and then ultimately get a CIP going for those as well. So we have prepared those master plans for each park. We have about 14 to overall, to go over with you overall, and each of those master plans, you'll see in a minute, talk about what we have currently in the parks, as well as what we would like to see added amenities, some of the feedback we've, we got from our public, as well as feedback from Michael and his fabulous crew on some of the things that he hears from the public on a day-to-day basis, as well as our five-year maintenance plan. So, okay, so without further ado, tonight, we're going to discuss five parks, and that is Jack Emmett, Kerr Street Recreation, Riverwalk Crossing Park, Wilson Bay, and Riverwalk Marina. Those are, you know, in the same general area, and we do look at, we looked at all of our parks comprehensively, so we want to make sure we show you the big picture as far as if something is in one location, it might not be at another. So that's how we looked at it. So we will start with, our first ones tonight will be Jack Emmett, but we do plan on coming back in a couple of weeks with the follow-ups, and then potentially as a third workshop as well. And we would love to come back to you with the final document, given all your feedback, ideally in May if we could. Okay, so Jack Emmett, this is a great one. We have some wonderful things already planned for this one, as you are aware. We have several components already going on. We have a beautiful ball field, lit ball field. We have a splash pad, we have shades, we have a new restroom, we have lit basketball courts, we have a shelter, we have a playground. Really what we're talking about here is expanding the gym, which you're all aware, we're extremely excited about that. So that will be coming up on the horizon shortly, as well as the building, park maintenance building that will be moving to the other side of the parking lot. So not a whole lot of changes here we're proposing, is really just what you've already pretty much seen and approved, and that is the gym, the gymnasium, the new recre, expanded recreation, and the park maintenance. And then ultimately, we're going to keep up with maintenance and moving on with that. So I have some of these things. This is what we currently have out there. We're proposing a walking trail, maybe some more shelters, and then everything else we pretty much already have, as well as this is our proposed CIP is moving forward, which again, I think you're familiar with this one, since this is a fairly new and current project. We did discuss land acquisition. We're a little landlocked at this site, so we did talk a little bit about what is it that we could do in the future, again, long-term. There's nothing on the books or no prospects, but if an opportunity arises, it might be an opportunity for us to move forward and expand the footprint, so we can just further grow our open space there. General maintenance, they do a great job with updating some stuff, but you'll probably just see, we're going to work on the parking lot after it gets built, as well as just keeping that splash pad up to date, keeping the shade structures and some of the amenities on that splash pad, and just general maintenance, keeping it nice and into our standards on a regular basis. So this is our five-year maintenance plan, and any questions so far on Jack Emmett?
Let me just add one quick thing on the shade structures. If you haven't been by, boy, the microphones are strong tonight. Been by, Michael's crews have been installing those shade structures during the winter, so that when we open the splash pad, let's say in sometime in May or June, that they'll be ready. Michael, you want to comment on that?
They're actually ready. We were able to open them at the end of last year. Sorry about that. We were able to open them at the end of last year. We have three shade structures out there, and I would be remiss if I didn't add that. It wasn't just our staff. FMS was very helpful in us putting those structures up, but we were able to do it internally as a city, and that was a big cost savings, as well as, you know, the master plan, Susan's put a lot of work into it. We've all put a lot of work into it, but once again, Public Services Engineering's had a big hand in this with us and helping us plan that out. I just wanted to acknowledge that, that they've been a part of this. This isn't just been Michael and Susan sitting down coming up with this. We've actually reached out to some of our peers to, to get this done. Sorry.
And that, that does remind me, I wanted to also let you know, I think a question several of you might ask is, our goal is so that this document, when it's adopted, is eligible for part of grants and other grants that will, obviously, we will apply for. So our goal is with our public input, with your input, with it getting adopted, it will be something that we'll be able to utilize as a, a document for our grant funding opportunities. So I just wanted to make sure I, I'd let you know that now.
Question?
Yes, sir.
With, you mentioned playground, are you considering handicap accessible playground going forward?
Absolutely. I think with any of our playgrounds, as we change those out or update them, we would certainly try and make those all handicap accessible.
Thank you.
Yes.
What's the update to the splash pad?
Well, it would just be a matter of changing out maybe some apparatuses, changing out some of the features. That splash pad is five years old, as it is right now, so we, we're just going to do some fun things, not changing any of the footprint. We've made some minor improvements to it, but we just want to keep it fresh. That's all. Good question. Any other thoughts? Okay, well, we will go to the next one, which is what I think a lot of people consider our hidden gem, and that is Wilson Bay Park. Obviously, our footprint is our footprint at this location, but we do have some things we would like to update and maintain. It's a beautiful location, and we want to redo the boardwalk, improve the pier. We also considered, I don't know if you can see there, maybe a shelter overlooking the water and, and adding some additional walkways. We have proposed a new restroom as well. But this site, we didn't, we would also change out the rest, the playgrounds, and we would, obviously, with any playground we change out, we're going to do the accessible surface as well as the playground. So this isn't calling for a whole lot of new, but certainly some improved on what you already have there. It's a beautiful site, the boardwalk, the pier, a shelter, so that people can really just take advantage of what we have there. But I'll show you that chart, and this is what we have there, so obviously, this is what we're considering moving forward and updating. It's the restrooms, a new pier, sidewalks, and then replacing the playground. Five-year maintenance plan would obviously be just keeping up with what you already have, and Michael's crew already, crews do a great job with that, but we just want to acknowledge that as well as when we move forward in, in the plan, in the big picture. It's a beautiful park, and we're going to keep it that way, but with some improvements. Any questions on this one? Any thoughts? All right, well, I will just move along then. Okay, so next, we are going to go down towards the water, and we, we'll call this Kerr Street Park. This is where the recreation center is. In a minute, we'll kind of jump the street over to the marina, but the, this one is with the recreation center. So as you can see, we are looking at potentially expanding the recreation center. We have a beautiful ball field, those tennis courts are already there. They're highly used, and people love them, including the pickleballers, and we want to keep that. But we are going to maybe repurpose some of the space we have there and get the playground in a different location. Right now, that playground is kind of in the curve of the road. I, I would be remiss to say, I, I don't think it's the best location for the playground, so we look to move that, and then that would create a domino effect. Basketball's popular, but we did move the basketball court to that outside, outside of the outside fence there. If you look in the very top right-hand corner, you can see that's actually a basketball court out there. So we still want to keep it, but we can better take spa, use of the space by having the current basketball field as a shelter next to the playground, so that a lot of people want to be able to enjoy their picnic time, enjoy their family time, and have a playground. And if we expand the recreation center, which is our smallest site recreation-wise, we would be able to utilize a good triangulation of activities. And new restrooms at the location as well, yes. Restrooms are needed in this whole area for many reasons. It's highly used, we have lots of activities, and this is an outdoor location that people do utilize, and restrooms are, are, are needed. Right now, we're challenged with shared use of restrooms between the recreation center and the public, and it does pose problems for when it comes summertime. We have kids in the building, and then you have, you know, it's just a challenge. They're not nearly adequate enough.
Are you using the same design we use, like at, the latest, what's we doing at the?
At the Marina and Wooton Park and Jack Emmett, yes, sir. Georgetown, Northeast Creek.
Right.
We like that design because we can use the core of it, and depending on the site we actually put the facility, the restroom facility, we can kind of build it specific from storage or locker room or whatever have you, but the core of the building will look the same, so your restrooms will be uniformed, and I think that's a goal we all have, is we want to have the same look, Jacksonville's brand.
This is just the list of those projects that we're looking to do out there, long-term. Restroom, restrooms, playground, community center, picnic shelters, and then relocate those basketball courts. Obviously, five-year maintenance plan includes the general maintenance landscaping, some benches, tables, you know, upkeep on our tennis courts, you know, those sort of things. Any thoughts, any feedback?
The only comment I had, go back to the overall layout. That tennis court, I mean, excuse me, that basketball court's a long way from, from restrooms. I know that's, I know you're working within the confines of the given space, but you've got to walk all the way around because that's fenced.
It is, yes, sir.
So it's a...
It's a great point.
I know you, I know you prefer somewhere else, but it just looks, it looks odd out there to me.
It's a good point.
So where the basketball court is now is where the shelter and the restroom is?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, yes.
What about swapping the playground and basketball court sites?
You'd put the playground back in.
Still close to the road, right?
Yeah, when it comes to playgrounds, parents like, I mean, in, in our general humble opinion, parents like to see their kids, and so having the playgrounds closer to the building and the shelter is the thought on why we moved it actually closer.
As well as the restrooms.
As well as the restrooms for the kids. Yes, sir. But we can certainly look at some other options for those basketball courts.
That looks like that you, you've made the best of a bad situation, but, but it is odd.
Well, and you know, that, I mean, we didn't consider part of that parking lot, but that parking lot is technically ours to be, to be. I don't know if we could, if we gain any parking somewhere else, that might be an option there.
It's a good point.
We didn't look at that parking lot, because there is parking right left of that new shelter and where the basketball court is, so that, we might be able to squeeze one in over there. We can certainly look at it, though. This is certainly feedback we would like to hear, so certainly.
And I guess the discussion of consuming that road is moot anymore, or we don't talk about that, or Dr. Woodruff?
The road. There you go.
Mr. Thomas, one time, we did look at the road that came around to determine the possibility of closing that road. Given the traffic pattern, though, in that area, we really feel like that with the marina there and with the Court Street hopefully one day opening up and Kerr Street continuing to grow in that area, that it's actually, it's not an ideal situation, but for the moment, we felt just leaving that road open. One thing we could do, you'll notice on the marina master plan when it comes up, that we're calling for a shelter and bathrooms there. We really don't want children crossing the street, though, to get to the restrooms. But like Susan said, we'll, we'll look at the basketball courts and the space that's there. It's just a, you know, it's, we already have 4.8 pounds in a five-pound bag, and we're trying to get six pounds in there, so it's going to be difficult, but we'll do some options for you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Dr. Woodruff led me right into, across the street. So obviously, this is a beautiful facility that we have pretty much finished as far as our marina, gazebo, kayak launch. We are thrilled with it. I think the public is certainly going to even utilize it more this summer. We don't have a whole lot we're going to add here, but the pavilion and restrooms is probably one of those big things that we really need to add. The restrooms, again, I mentioned to you a minute ago, they're highly needed, but the pavilion, I mean, it's a beautiful site. So the concept Dr. Woodruff has for an open-air, beautiful, just enjoying our natural scenery there, along with some restrooms, is really the biggest thing we're just going to propose and leave it as is, just taking advantage of open space and beautiful restroom. So that's, that's all you see as far as our proposal for there. Other than that, we felt like this was a pretty complete project. So this is what we have. We have some nice things. We have the gazebo, the kayak, pavilion, pavilion is what we're proposing, but restrooms are what we're proposing, and we have boat slips. And I guess I could mention that we are utilizing some of the money that FEMA on this project for the pavilion. So the pavilion is being offset, as you know, everything got destroyed down there, and the building that was down there was, was utilized or repurposed for the FEMA fundings to help with the pavilion coming up.
And we expect within probably the next two to three workshops to be able to share some concepts with you, asking you to authorize those to go to construction drawings, so you'll actually see the pavilion-restroom combination.
And then obviously, maintenance is going to just landscape and some benches, some nice things. Any questions, any thoughts? Okay, so we will move around to the corner, Riverwalk Crossing Park. I apologize, not, this is such a long park that we will be sure to get you some, I think Carmen can upload these images to you so that you can see these a little bit closer. This is our best way to show you, we considered this entire park for this discussion, and you will see everything from the very top. We'll just talk about, the very top is, on the right-hand side is the depot. So we are proposing to obviously redevelop the depot. It got damaged extensively with Hurricane Florence, and so we're working on that project currently. So we're going to redo the depot, better utilize it, make it some nice space for the public to utilize, and then moving down the park. It's a beautiful park, we're not proposing a whole lot. The biggest thing we're going to look at is how to best add some amenities for future use, and that is, again, talking about restrooms. So if you move all the way to the end of the park where the old building, the water plant, water tower is, we are discussing restrooms down there. That's where you'll see some...
The green box.
Green, a green box, I think. I guess maybe this side's a little bit better for me. But we have a shelter planned, that'll be a really nice amenity that will be off to the side of the park, so it won't obstruct the view looking down the park, but we have a nice shelter, restrooms, and a museum scheduled for the old water plant. So we're excited about the opportunities there. We also need to address the old pier. We've already talked about that as far as it needing some work done to it. So similar to Wilson Bay, it's a beautiful pier, it already has some nice things, but we do need to update and rebuild that, redevelop that pier and gazebo, so that would just be more of a, a fix and a rebuild on those amenities that you already have as opposed to adding those.
Two comments. The gazebo that you see at the water is actually... Thank you, John. The gazebo that you see at the water is actually at the wrong location. It's going to be located much closer to the parking lot at the little pier. We don't want anything that will interfere with the overall long view. The other part, many of you, as, as you have attended the National Night Out, you have had the pleasure of eating some great hot dogs and hamburgers under that tent. That's where the large shelter would eventually be built, so that as we have National Night Out or other events, or if people want to have a, a large gathering. Within the next several months, we will begin a major stormwater project that will literally dig up most of Riverwalk Park. During Hurricane Florence, we had, as, as you know, that park not only has sewer lines in it, it also has a major drainage system for downtown. Those pipes that were put in are various sizes, most of them are metal, and during Hurricane Florence, many of them failed. So Wally has been working on a project where we do have some FEMA funding, where we will be literally digging up the vast majority of the park and installing a brand-new concrete pipes, so that we don't have failure 20, 30 years from now. So while Michael will be doing a lot of mowing, we're not going to be doing a lot of improvements landscape-wise to that park this summer, because it most likely is going to be under construction in the fall. Now, that will impact things like Oktoberfest and so forth, so we'll need to coordinate with those folks. Wally is here, you want to add anything to that?
Any, any thoughts, any feedback? We welcome anything you have for us.
One other thing I might mention, we discussed with you probably a year or so ago issues of the brick pavers and the roots. We've taken out a number of the trees as they have grown, we really didn't need as many trees as we did when the park was young. That has alleviated a lot of the corner issues with the handicap ramps. The other thing that Michael is going to be doing, it will be a long process, is we're going to be swapping out the brick for more of a concrete paver. The brick that are there are actually not intended to be utilized in the format that we're utilizing them. We think by getting into more of a concrete brick that has interlocking joints on the side, but that will be a long-term project. Michael, you want to comment?
Yeah, it's, it would be similar if you have the opportunity to go over to Jack Emmett, where the shade structures are. We put the same sort of paver down a couple of months ago, and it's, you know, when Riverwalk was built in the early 2000, the world of pavers has changed tremendously, and they're just, the existing bricks are just laid there, there's not really sand in between them, there's not a lot of room for anything to happen, and if it does happen, it creates a problem. There's, there's different types of pavers out today that would maybe lead us to have a better success with maintenance on those pavers long-term down the road, and, but it is going to be, as Dr. Woodruff mentioned, that, that's a, it's a very long process, especially if we're going to take that on internally. It would be a very long phase process, but something we could do, but you, we'd have to have patience in doing that.
Question about the, the depot. Any thought about adding bathrooms in there, public bathrooms? It's a long walk from, from that end all the way down. If you have an emergency, it sure would be nice to have it closer.
We have looked, if you'll remember, because you, you've all been in the depot, there is a little kitchen and there is a bathroom. And what we thought about doing, because they both are very small, is combining that into one nice bathroom. Now, we hadn't thought about whether it would be open to the public, because normally that building is not open to the public, but we are going to improve the bathrooms, but certainly as we get further in, we could look at that.
Are those, those pavers, are they porous in any way? Do they help with the water infiltration rather than just running off and creating?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just, this is the list of things we have out there, as well as what we're working on. These are things that would be in a CIP for long-term, and that's the depot, restrooms, and a museum at the old water plant.
Let's talk about the museum at the water plant a moment. The water plant, you know, that is the original water plant of the city, if I understand correctly. The concept, if, and I don't know whether you've even been in the building, but when you walk through the double doors, on the immediate left is the huge generator that ran that plant, still sitting there. In the next room is a huge pump and the electrical system. So the concept that we have there would be to put in, for lack of a better term, a storefront wall, clean those areas up, paint them where they would look or resemble, resemble what they had years ago when they were in operation, and then put bathrooms in some of the offices. There actually is a bathroom there. Most of the other rooms that are there would, are, were used for offices, but what we were thinking is opening up the breezeway, so that from front to back, you would no longer have doors. You would simply walk up, walk through, see the museum pieces on the left, have public restrooms on the right. You can make it handicapped accessible on the portion of the building that's between the water tower and the building itself. You'd have to build a handicap ramp there. Just a concept, the building is not in great shape, so whether you'll actually be able to afford what roof repairs are going to need and the other things, but at least it's a concept at this point. Certainly document your history down there. Now, Ron has talked about taking the top off of the great big storage well that was there and turning that into a public swimming pool, but that one didn't make the, the CIP list, but it may in fact one day come up.
And yeah, the fishing pier. And again, maintenance on this one, obviously, there's a lot of landscape, and they do a great job, so it would just be a matter of landscape, benches, tree maintenance, all of those sort of things. So that actually was what we had planned for you tonight. We kind of kept those parks all in that general direction of downtown. Our next step is going to be to review some more, so you'll see the next parks are going to be in the Wooton Park, Phillips Park, some of the ones in the middle of town, and then we're going to move towards the Commons at Northeast Creek Park as we get towards those as well. So those are our large, what we would consider regional parks that we'll have a little probably more discussion, but I welcome any feedback now, or if you have any other thoughts, or anybody watching us has any feedback, they can certainly let us know. This is a public input process, and we do want to value everybody's opinion, so we will come back to you on the 16th and present probably four or five more, and then move forward with getting a plan completed and ultimately adopted.
We'll also have Carmen upload these for you, so you can better study the graphics, especially. Good job, folks.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim, Council, thank you for the opportunity to come present our personnel request for Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services. I'd like to start by reminding everybody at home what our mission is at Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services. This is something that we have posted throughout all of our stations, and we expect all of our members to know by heart at all times. And that is to provide excellent customer service through prevention, readiness, and response to the threats and lives of the property to the people we serve. Contrary to public perception of the fire service and the way Hollywood portrays us, we at Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services are extremely busy with a lot of responsibilities. We do a lot more than just fire suppression and handling medical emergencies. We're also responsible for hazmat response with inside the city and outline well areas. We also have technical rescue components that can include confined space, confined, yeah, confined space rescue, structural collapse, high-angle rescue. We also, all these things are perishable skills, so we have to have constant training to maintain that level of proficiency. We also do car seat inspections, fire inspections, fire prevention programs, pre-plants, hydrant maintenance, and vehicle and equipment maintenance. Our budget this year, which also includes our brand-new Engine 3, is 7.2 million, and we're still operating out of four stations. Our personnel is 88 total with two part-time positions, 80 shift-assigned personnel that is spread across three shifts, five in admin and support, and three in prevention. Our operations, our fleet includes five engines, three which are frontline, two which we keep in reserve. And I have an error in this slide right here. Our newest engine is a 2017 instead of a 2012, with our oldest being a 1995. The replacement cost nowadays for these apparatus are $650,000. Our tower ladder is a 2007 with a replacement cost nowadays of 1.3 to 1.4 million. Quint IV at Station IV is a 2014, and its replacement cost is close to $1 million. Rescue I, which is a 2011, its replacement cost would be $500,000 to $600,000. And with our four squads, 2011 to 2019, their replacement cost would be around $50,000. Our fiscal year '22 challenges, our limited budget resources, the evolving role of fire personnel, especially nowadays having to provide the level of service that they have with the types of calls, with the opioid epidemic, the pandemic, the increased level of services that we provide, the suicides, those high-stress calls that they're going to every day, certainly is evolve the role. The staffing and the overtime, we've had problems with turnover, it's led to overtime, injuries, vacation leave, it's all a challenge. And also the increased expectations for efficiencies and effectiveness. All that has to go along with accreditation and the improvements of our service. And all this leads to higher stress levels for personnel. There's under that constant pressure to provide the level of service in those dynamic environments. Our service improvements, beginning in the summer of last year, we sat down as a command staff and tried to figure out ways, what we could do right now nowadays to improve our level of service. We began looking at our calls, our call types, the frequencies, the areas that they happen. We looked at our accreditation recommendations, we looked at our ISO rating, and tried to figure out ways that we can make cost-effective improvements today. Part of that was, we swapped Ladder I and Rescue I. If you remember, that's something we did back in October. We started looking at the calls, and a lot of our vehicle accidents started happening on the western side of town, so we moved our heavy rescue to that side of town to provide a better level of service, and so it could be there quicker. We brought our ladder up to Station I because we were having problems with coverage of our aerial devices. Quint IV, Ladder I were both on one side of town. So now with Quint IV being where it is and Ladder I being at Station I, we have them in the corners. Also with the development with downtown, the bigger buildings, the jail, the new courthouse, the new health department, City Hall, it made sense to bring the ladder over there to provide coverage in that district. Also with the access to the bypass, we're able to get to different parts of the city faster. So also, we were having troubles with service company credit in Districts II and Districts IV. This is big with our ISO rating. One of the simple fixes we could make with this was taking two of our squad companies, putting a basic level of equipment on those squads, and moving them to Stations II and Station IV and keeping those staffed. With them being staffed, they can provide that service-level credit to areas of Station II and Station IV that weren't previously being covered. Along with that, we took the opportunity to shift some of our personnel around. As promotions happen, people gaining certifications, people moving on, we had all of our technical rescue people stacked on one shift, all of our hazmat people stacked on one shift. We had them spaced out all over the city. So we took that opportunity to spread those people evenly out across the shifts and to get them back at those prospective stations that house that equipment. What were the advantages of that? It gave us better coverage across the city, and also it gave them the chance to facilitate their training. They're in the stations where that equipment is staged, so they're there all the time, and they have the opportunity to use it a lot more instead of moving all around the city to gain access to that equipment. It's right there, hands-on, so they can constantly work at it. Also with balancing out the people, that gives them a better opportunity to train as a group instead of bringing people in on their time off to facilitate that training. It also lowers the turnout and response times. Part of our service delivery and safety, while accreditation is a continuous model for improvement, and ISO gives cost savings to our citizens through insurance rating, our most important thing is our customer service and producing that positive outcome for our customers and providing the enhanced safety aspect for our personnel. Part of the challenges we have on calls, especially on fires and anything with an IDLH environment or technical rescue, is the two-in-and-two-out rule. Anytime we send anybody in a building before they can go in, unless there's a life safety hazard, they have to have two people out with a charged hose line ready to go in in case they had an emergency. Also, we have rapid intervention teams. This is a separate team that carries specialized tools and equipment, extra air, so if they were to get trapped, were to get pinned down, were run out of air, they're able to make access inside the building to help rescue those down firefighters. And then this is something that we kind of were at the forefront of was firefighter rehab. The physiological demands on firefighters nowadays with the gear we wear, the temperatures that we're exposed to, we've had to enact stricter policies and guidelines on our firefighters when they're fighting these fires or in the technical rescue or these IDLH environments. We, with the temperature extremes, we have to send them through rehab. When they come out with a bottle exchange, basically they're getting a mini-physical right there on scene. Their blood pressure is checked, their temperature is checked, their pulse is checked, their O2 saturation is checked, to make sure that they're physiologically fit to go back in when they're ready to continue to handle these incidents. And as temperature extremes, like in the heat of the summer and the dead cold of the winter, it adds to that criteria. As you can see over the past 10 years, our service demand has increased exponentially. Fiscal year 2009, we ran just under 1,500 calls, where now we're almost running 5,000. Our emergency services demand, the fires, this is hard to predict. It kind of goes in cycles. We haven't cracked the code on it yet, but it just, it goes up and down as time goes on. As you can see, our EMS incidents have continued to rise every year. Also, our hazardous material and technical rescue incidents have gone up too over the With all these training and certifications, the demands on these firefighters to maintain that minimum level of proficiency has almost doubled in 10 years. Our '22 budget issues are overtime budget. In fiscal year '20, we spent just over $130,000 in overtime. This year, halfway through the budget year, we're already at $87,000 for overtime. In fiscal year '22, we don't quite know what that's going to be yet. Part of the problem is maintaining our minimum staffing levels. These men and women, they have scheduled vacations, they have scheduled time off. When people leave for other employment or we have illness or injuries, that affects that minimum staffing level. We still honor these vacations and this stuff because they need that time to decompress. So that's why tonight I'm asking for the addition of four firefighters. If you remember in last council meeting's agenda, I asked your permission to apply for the Safer Grant. We are in the process of applying for that grant right now. It's due later on this month, and in that grant, we're asking for these four firefighters. If we're to be awarded that grant, they would pay the salaries for the first three years with no salary match from the city. So we should know something in the early spring with the government's forecast whether or not we will be awarded this grant. With the addition of these four firefighters, we're looking to reduce or better manage our overtime budget. We're looking to boost employee morale. When they have to cover these extra shifts, that's extra time away from their family, that's extra stress with the training they have to do, that's extra stress with the calls they have to go on. It also gives us some staffing flexibility. It allows us to make sure that most of our, all of our apparatus are staffed and maintained, and it gives us hiring opportunities. Based on our current training level, we've actually modified our hiring requirements where you have to be 18 years old, have a driver's license, and have a high school diploma. So with that, with these hiring opportunities, it gives us a chance to diversify and look for our local and homegrown people with inside the city in Onslow County. And it also helps with retention and straining. With that lower stress and the stress that training and gathering these certification causes, it helps tremendously with that. So is, any questions or feedback?
You mentioned before about service squad credit. Can you flip back to that without a lot of the...
Yes, sir.
You might want to explain for the benefit of the public why that's important in terms of, and I'm sure you're going to talk about the ISO rating and so on.
Yes, sir. That service company credit, we get that with our rescues and our ladders, and part of the coverage in Districts II and IV lacked that because Station II had a, just an engine there, and it had a squad. So just by putting some basic equipment on Engine II, it gives that service-level credit covering that district area, which is, allows us to boost our ISO score.
And what's the impact? Why is that important?
That's important because that affects the insurance rates inside the city. Yes, sir.
To who?
Homeowners, business owners, anybody that...
I'm trying to be your straight man there.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your help. Yes, sir.
Chief Tomlin, on the Safer Grant, you're asking for these four officers to be covered by the Safer Grant. You say it's for three years. It's a diminishing...
No, sir, there's no cost match for the city for three years. I know in the past it's been a diminishing, but right now it's 100% for three years.
So what's the obligation the city has after the end of that three years?
There's no obligation, sir.
Okay. Can they cover 100% of it?
Sir?
100%.
Yes, sir.
Can they cover?
One thing I would point out to you is, if you listen to the presentation that Chief Tomlin has given, and then you look in the audience back here, we have two other white shirts. Amy, would you and Sean stand up, please? And Mike, would you stand up too? The level of professional leadership that is now in the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services is pretty amazing. These young people have been your leadership for, what, 18 months now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You can tell by the information, by the things that they've accomplished, the things that Mike is working directly with them to mentor them, to help build a quality department. If you look at the goals that Mike and T and Sean and Amy set for the department, they were goals that were initiated not by themselves but by the personnel in the department. And over the last 18 months, they have accomplished almost every one of those goals. So I can tell you as the manager, I'm very proud of these four people who stand in front of you. They have really turned the fire department around. I don't mean that by, you know, turning the truck to the left, but literally from a morale and leadership standpoint, they stand tall in my eyes. So ladies and gentlemen, well done.
Thank you, sir.
One of the challenges that we will have...
I have a question, Council.
Have you been able to tell what's the biggest reason for turnover?
Uh, yes, sir, there's been several reasons. In the past, like I said, morale was one of the issues. Also, there's a lot of job opportunities out there. We've lost a lot of our firefighters to the base and other municipalities, a lot of the beach municipalities. So the opportunities have been there, and we create, we have excellent employees, highly-trained, desirable employees. Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson, I read all of the exit interviews for all of the departments, the ones that are filled out by the employees. It's not mandatory that they fill it out. What I consistently see in the fire department is this. Number one, it's a great stepping stone. We have firefighters that don't even live within 100 miles of us, but they need to get into the fire profession, so they get on with us and they stay a year or two, and then an opening comes up in, you know, wherever. And they leave us because they've now got credentials. The base is the number-one area that recruits away from us. We simply cannot compete with their pay grade. Another thing that we find is, it's not television. So a lot of people who get into it, they decide, this really isn't what I thought I was doing. And then there are occasionally retirements. Turnover includes retirements. And we do have a fire department, as well as a general city workforce, that has a variety of ages. Not all of them are as young as I am. So we do see a number of turnovers. Right now, he, T, is going through a selection process for a company officer, and I believe that was caused by a retirement.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But those are the primary things.
That all you got?
Well, no, a couple more things if that's okay. Like I said earlier in the presentation, you also graciously allowed us to purchase a new engine this year. With that, in the past, the fire chief has always been the one, along with the mechanic, that has specced the engines out and purchased the engines. But as part of getting investment from our department, we formed a committee to, have an apparatus committee to interview the department, to get their input on what they wanted in a fire truck. And Chief Prokopio headed a committee at the fire department to specc this truck out. Just recently, they returned from Wisconsin, where they went to the pre-build at the Pierce Manufacturing Plant, where they got to go through everything that they specced out to make sure that it was exactly like they wanted. They got to walk through the factory floor and look at everything that was going on. Part of the things that they came back with was a new color scheme. So with the police department updating their graphics package on their vehicles, they took the opportunity to specc a new color scheme for our engines. With Dr. Woodruff's blessing, we reached out to the fire department and got a poll, and over 90%, 90% of our department approved of the new color scheme. So with their input, oh, this is the new color scheme for Engine One, or excuse me, Engine Three. The gray over the red... The gray over the red with the black stripe, the black and red on the front bumpers, and the, still the red and yellow Chevrons on the back.
Now, this is, while we're not asking you to adopt the budget tonight, obviously, we do need to let the factory know that, yes, this is the color scheme, or no, we're staying, we're going with another one. I will say, the red on this is not actually as red as you think it is. It's actually a red fire truck. It's just the gray is going to be replacing the white. We think this is a good step. Obviously, our fleet over the next 15 years will be a mixed bag of white and red versus gray and red. I would recommend this to you, but at the end of the day, you're the ones who have to approve this. Anyone have any objection to us moving forward with this?
As you say, it's going to be a brighter red than what's showing up on this.
Yes, sir. It's the same red that we have on all of our engines, sir? Yes, sir.
Nancy State grad, I do, I do prefer the red and white, but gray will be okay, though, I think. I just had to say that.
Looks good. Good job by your folks for going through that painstaking ordeal of picking the color and the right piece of equipment, and that's going to serve your needs that you have, right?
Yes, sir. We're extremely excited about it, and thank you again.
You're going to go?
Station three.
Station three.
Only 90% of your personnel endorse a color scheme? Well, I think that's enough said.
In the fire department. So, Amy and her committee have done an excellent job.
Good job, Amy.
Invested a lot of time in this.
In your committee.
Also, we're moving away from the Rosenbauer equipment. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Rosenbauer?
Yes, sir.
And this is a...
Pierce.
A Pierce. Do we have any other apparatus that are currently Pierce?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm going to slide over and allow Chief Prokopio.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to thank you all too for taking the time to listen to me talk about the station three remodel. This station is 36 years old. It's the oldest station in the city. It was opened in 1985 and was designed for six personnel. Currently, we have eight to nine personnel that stay there, so we've kind of outgrown it. It's 10,824 square feet, and the only upgrade was that the kitchen was remodeled in 2013. Other than that, it's the same station that's been there this whole time. The equipment that is at station three is engine three. That's where the new engine will go when we get it, hopefully in October. Rescue one, squad three, boat two, and engine six, which is our reserve apparatus. So, engine six is not staffed every day. It's only in service when one of our frontline trucks is out of service. And engine three can house either four to five personnel. Sometimes it's down to three, depending on what the staffing is for the day. Rescue one has two personnel, and squad three also has two personnel. During hurricanes and other weather events, there could be double or triple personnel at the station all at one time. This is a picture of the right side of the common bunk room. There's Murphy beds that fold up into the wall. Over time, we've added personnel to the station, so we have twin beds on one side. And then over here on the other side, we have a bunk bed shoved in the corner, and there's like a wooden divider to give a little bit of privacy, but there's really not any privacy going on in the bunk room area. You can see there's totes. The storage is an issue. Being able to exit to get quickly to the truck to go on calls is a bit of a safety hazard, especially at nighttime when the lights are off. It's just a very cramped area. This is the common bathroom. So, this is a bathroom that men and women would use. There's a lock on the door. There's three sinks, and then the shower on the right actually has two shower heads facing each other with no divider in between. So, it really isn't set up for, you know, women and men to be able to use. It can only be one at a time at this point, and we do have more of a diverse workforce than we used to have 30-plus years ago. So, upgrades to the bathrooms are definitely needed. The captain's office is there on the left. It's very tiny when you have a desk and filing cabinets in there. For you to be able to have employee meetings is, is very difficult. The radio room, this is where the firefighters will come back and do their reports, enter their fire inspections. This is also an outdated area. On the left is the kitchen that was remodeled and the dining room area, and then on the right is the dayroom area. This area is where station three and four will hold their trainings for EMT class every month. So, you have two stations worth of personnel trying to fit into this tiny space, so we have to move chairs around, and the instructor is kind of, you know, half the people really can't see what they're doing and things like that. So, it's really not an ideal learning environment for, for the personnel. Here we have our physical fitness area. We want our firefighters to be physically fit and healthy, so we do have equipment there for them. There just isn't an ideal space for them to workout. This is in the bay area in between the apparatus. It's very hot during the summer months. The treadmill is out in the humidity, so that causes issues over time. And also, just having all of that equipment in between the apparatus is a trip hazard for the personnel trying to get to the trucks to leave on calls. So, upgrades that are needed. We're asking for 24 beds minimum for the eight personnel per shift, for three shifts. It's not ideal to share beds, especially during a pandemic. So, ideally, each person would have a bed assigned to them, and they wouldn't have to share with other people. Additional bathrooms and showers are needed. Ideally, they would be unisex, like we have at stations one and station two, where there's a sink, a toilet, and a shower all in one room, and it, the door can be locked, and each person can take a shower and not have to wait to decon themselves after a call. As you could see, the station needs a classroom space. That station is used for three and four for their training, and having a space that's dedicated for classrooms would be ideal. The physical fitness area is also recommended not to be located in, in the bay in between the apparatus. Here we have cascade system. That's where we fill our air cylinders for our air packs. This is located in the bay, and ideally, that would be in its own separate room. That keeps the filters clean. It's in a clean air environment. That's what we're going to be breathing, so we don't really want to have it mixed with the diesel exhaust that's in the bay. And then, same thing with the turnout gear that is housed right next to the cascade system. This is where the gear is stored when people are not on shift. It's out in, not in the elements as in the rain, but the humidity, which can degrade the gear over time, and also the carcinogens that can get on it from the trucks. Here we have the engine clearance. This is our reserve engine six, which is in service over there. It's a very tight squeeze. The trucks are not getting any smaller, they're getting bigger. Back when the station was opened, the trucks were more narrow at that time, but we're trying to carry more and more equipment than what we did back 36 years ago. On the right-hand side, it's hard to see in the picture, but that's water that's leaking out of the truck. The trucks carry water. Naturally, they're going to leak, but there are no drains in the floors, so there's not really anywhere for the water to go. So, when people are coming around the front of the truck, it's a slip hazard for them. And this just kind of reiterates the pictures. And then, on the very end of the station is a maintenance bay. The maintenance bay is also very cramped. You can see on the picture on the left that there's no way to work on the truck on the right-hand side. As you go inside, there's not a lot of storage or walkway area. And then, you can see in the ceiling, it makes it hard for, for our maintenance officer to work on the trucks inside. So, if he has to work on our aerial trucks, he has to pull it out into the parking lot and work on it outside. We have a pit, which is a safety and an environmental hazard. So, if we were able to upgrade this eventually down the road, we would want to do away with the pit altogether. And storage is definitely a problem at the station. We have storage buildings outside, and then the parking lot. When we have fire prevention classes come to our station, they have to park in the office parking lot across the street. We've had complaints because the buses are parking over there, and we don't have an area for the public to park. During shift change, this parking lot is overfilled with, with cars just from our personnel. All right. So, obviously, the maintenance bay, the size, the storage and the layout, widening the entrance for the driveway for the apparatus coming off of Huff Drive near the daycare, it's a tight squeeze to turn in our large apparatus. We'd like to look at additional parking and an additional bay to house all of our equipment. Our reserve apparatus, as you could see, sometimes it's parked in the maintenance bay because there isn't room for it in the actual bay. We're having to back the squads in instead of driving them through, which backing accidents are, are always kind of a hazard that we want to avoid. So, the progress that we've made so far over at station three, a new generator was installed. This was a huge issue during Hurricane Florence. Our personnel didn't have power over there for quite a while, so we were able to get a new generator installed, and it is fully functional. It is large enough to be able to improve the station, and we wouldn't have to upgrade that down the road. The pine trees at the front of the station on the Huff Drive side were removed. That was a safety concern for our personnel, staying there during hurricanes. We didn't want a tree to come down on the station on the living quarters side where they, where they sleep. And we hired an architect to develop a concept and pricing. We gave them a list of everything that would need to be upgraded, and for us to be able to live in the station while the upgrades were being made, that came back at around $9 to $10 million for the two different concepts, so obviously, that was not feasible. So, our next step was to team with engineering, and engineering and myself had come up with a, a good concept and brought it to the personnel. They all think that it's a, a good concept. It's something that they would be able to live with and operate out of, and they came up with some preliminary, preliminary pricing from some of the city projects that have gone on recently, and now we're in the process of hiring an architect to get an actual cost estimate to see what that would cost. We're looking at doing this in phases because we know that this is a big project that probably can't happen all at one time. So, the restrooms are obviously an issue. Hot bunking, or we call it hot racking, where the firefighters, when they get off shift, they would strip off their bedding, and then the next person would have to use that same bed. So, we want to try to avoid that. The increase of the male and female firefighter ratio, we have the most females on the fire department since I've been working there. And so, this just creates a challenge with the bathroom situation over there and privacy when you're sleeping and having to find somewhere to change, to exercise, or anything like that. So, we'd like to try to see some upgrades there. And then, obviously, there's more firefighters than there was originally designed for. There is no dedicated training space, no dedicated physical fitness area, and the equipment size versus the design, it's just not keeping up with what the, the apparatus are nowadays. The living space also versus what it was designed for is definitely not the same as it was 36 years ago. So, what we're requesting in the FY '22 budget is to enlarge the living area. This is our number one priority for our personnel, their, their living space, to put the turnout gear storage within that space, but where it would exit out into the bay area. A decontamination room. There is no decontamination room currently at station three, other than a mop room. And also, to get the cascade system to the interior. So, those are the requests that we're, we're asking for. Do you have any questions?
One question.
Yes.
How many personnel is actually per shift at this station?
Per shift, eight to nine. And this is another station where we have some of the specialized rescue equipment, the rescue, and that, one of the boats is stationed over there, so a lot of the technical rescue personnel would be stationed there during a hurricane. That's why we had people sleeping in hammocks in the bay during Florence, and that's definitely not ideal when we want them to be able to get rest when they're not scheduled to be on, on a truck.
We're currently working with an architect to not draw some concepts. As Amy said, the engineering department has worked very well with the fire department to come up with some basic concepts. Using that, we're asking the architect to come up with an opinion or probable cost. So, hopefully, within the next month, we'll be able to come back to you and say, okay, if we do this, this, and this, here's the projected cost. As she did say, initially, we looked at taking the entire station down and building a new station. I can tell you, looking at the finances of the city, maybe seven to 10 years from now, we could build another $10 million station. I don't see that in the cards for the next two or three or four years. And therefore, looking at a plan to remodel and keep certain portions of the current station, in my opinion, is the only feasible way. However, at the end, when we get all of the money identified, the cost identified, the concepts will be presented to you, and as always, you'll have the final say.
How many square feet are you talking about adding if...
Well, if, if we do it in phases, the engineering department, they're bringing the front of the station out towards Huff Drive to give us more space, and possibly being able to build up to give us like a classroom area and a workout area. So, it would more or less be building out this way, and then if we add the maintenance bay down the road, it would be on the other end of the building towards the apartments.
My memory is correct. To do the living space, as you just described it, a one or two-story building, the footprint was about 3,000 square feet per floor, is my memory. For a total of about 6,000 square feet, is my memory right or wrong?
It's most likely right.
Most likely right. That's because I'm the manager, or you just...
Be encouraged, or...
We will.
I think that was very diplomatic.
Coming back to us with additional information?
Yes, when we have, when we have some costs.
Again, you can see the excellent leadership that we now have in these young people. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, could we take a break a moment before we go to the next?
We're going to recess for a few minutes. We're back in session. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about drainage ditches and the city responsibility. Turnover, you all.
So, if you don't mind, I'll speak to you from the podium tonight. I have a few maps, so if I need to draw on those maps using our screen, it'll just make things easier. This follows the discussion that we had during the public comment or slightly following the public comment at your last meeting. So, we thought it'd be good to kind of go over what the city's responsibilities are when it comes to ditches and stormwater pipes and drain, in the drainage system. The city is responsible for stormwater runoff from city property or city streets. We cannot go on private property. We cannot handle stormwater runoff or ditches that leave an NCDOT roadway, or for, you know, you see the stormwater ponds in neighborhoods or at commercial businesses. So, the city does not handle any of those things. We are responsible for stormwater that leaves city property, which includes city streets. So, here's just a map of the city and the city's drainage network. We have 125 miles of ditch. We have 86 miles of pipe, and we have just under 5,000 structures. And the majority of those structures are catch basins that you see along the curb line that have the, the stormwater grates on them. So, our current policy states that we will remove obstructions that block water flow, and this is primarily for open ditch systems and swells and... And this is primarily for open ditch systems and swells and roadside ditches. We will clear vegetation that impacts major drainage ways. We will ensure that flow is maintained in roadside ditches. And we'll talk about what the homeowner's responsibility is in just a minute. But we are responsible to make sure that water flows in those roadside ditches. And we are responsible for developing policies and procedures to ensure that we follow specific schedules when we are clearing major drainage ways. And that relates to requirements that we have for storms and FEMA and insurance ratings. So it's, I think the most important piece of this slide is to talk about the city's responsibility is to handle the flow of water that comes from a city street or city property. You know, whether that be, you know, a building like this, City Hall, or from a Parks and Recreation facility or a park itself. The city is not responsible to... Sorry, the city does not allow, I forgot this point, but the city does not allow structures in our drainage easements. Periodically, we see fences erected in a drainage easement. That's probably the most common one. We don't permit fences unless they're over a certain height. So most of the time, those happen without our knowledge. We try to work with homeowners. And if one is there, one's been there for the last 20 years, we don't go require that they move it right away. But if we have to have access, we may work with the homeowner for them to either take it and move it or for us to remove it and then they have to put it back up. Under the current policy, the ditches that drain private property are that homeowner or that property owner's responsibility. For roadside ditches, while the city maintains flow, is the property owner's responsibility to cut and maintain the vegetation in that ditch. We don't allow and we really discourage from people discarding leaves or branches or grass clippings in ditches or open swells. I know people think that if they dump them there or if they blow their grass clippings out into the street, you know, the water will wash them down the storm drain and carry them away. That really causes us a lot of problems with water backing up and water standing. We have a great sanitation service. If you'll get it to the curb, we'll remove it. So we really try to prevent people from disposing of vegetative debris and other things in ditches. And then probably one of the most confusing things to people is while we will maintain a ditch, we're there to make sure that water flows. So if you have, you know, your traditional ditch where it looks like a V and the water's flowing in the bottom of it, we're not going to go cut trees that are up on the bank, even if they're in the easement, or possibly even if they're on the slope of the ditch. Those trees and that vegetation, as long as it's not blocking water flow, is important. That's what stabilizes the bank, helps prevent erosion. And the property, most of those areas are in easements, so the property is still the property owners. So if they want trees removed or something along those lines, they are responsible for that. Again, we're there to make sure that the water flows. There was a lot of talk at the last meeting about the city's responsibility and certain ditches. And it gets very confusing. So I pulled a few samples that we see quite frequently. This is one that was specifically talked about. And I apologize, I misspoke at the last meeting. I said there was only one ditch that was privately maintained. I was wrong. There was actually two. So the bottom street that you see is King Street. I apologize. I'll let Kevin fix it for me. The bottom street is King Street and then Cole kind of wraps around. So this is King and Cole kind of wraps around like this. So water in this neighborhood is collected through a series of ditches and pipes and then carried out to the edge of the development, which is this back ditch. And the arrows show you the flow of the water. And it comes around, actually takes a 90 that's just off the screen, and then it flows out around here. The blue lines that you see are actually privately maintained ditches. So the ditch between King and, Mr. Jackson, you may have to help me. Is that Carver? King and Carver, so this blue ditch that we're talking about here is one that specifically came up the other night. As you can see, the ditch doesn't go all the way to the end of the, to the street here. So there's no city runoff into that ditch. This pipe actually is a pipe and goes this way. So the drop inlets that are in Carver actually go out and run between the houses and run over and then come out this direction. So there is no city water or water leaving city property or city right of way for the ditches that are behind the houses between Kit and Carver and then Carver and, I'm sorry, King and Carver and then Carver, and I believe that's Kit, correct? My streets get confused. We have a lot of them. So the challenge is in where it gets confusing from residents understandably is, well, we maintain this ditch that is behind these properties, but you can see that we pick up drainage from here. There's actually off the map over here, we pick up. And then there's catch basins in here, in these streets, and also in this street, which is what makes all of these red lines city maintained. So we understand why this is confusing for residents, but unfortunately, we can't use city funds to go maintain private property. Another example of this is Heritage Square. Behind these houses, there's actually a swell. And the red line that you see here is city maintained. Now it is, I think it's pipe most of the way. There's a small section of open swell in the back of some of these. But what happens is the water that runs off the houses runs into the swell and then goes to the center. And we have a combination of swell and pipe that actually picks up the water. And in this case, water runs up because it runs out toward Country Club Road. So while it's up on the map, it's actually running toward Country Club Road. But you can see that we have drop inlets in each of these streets, which is what makes that center system ours to maintain. Another area that's also confusing is the Arnold Road area. I've received calls on this one several times. This road, I picked this one because it actually has roadside ditches. So the roadside ditches, again, the city's there to make sure that those roadside ditches maintain flow. So the water runs on the roadside ditches to a common point. And then there's a pipe in a ditch here. There's a pipe under the road to a ditch here. And it actually runs out and behind these houses, turns a 90 and runs behind those houses. So all the roadside ditches are the city's because they collect the water from the street. And then it's carried out and because, while this is between houses and this is behind houses, it's carrying all that runoff from the street. However, you can see on this side, this is actually the radio station. There's a ditch between the radio station and these houses. And there's no drainage from a city street, so that's all private, all the way up until the point where it combines with this roadside ditch. And there, the city picks up responsibility because it's a, again, a water leaving a city street. These are just three examples of areas that we get calls a lot. I can tell you that there are multiple situations like this in Northwoods. Clyde and Shaw are two examples of that. The Foxhorn Village with Steeplechase, Foxhorn Road, and maybe it's Derby Run also have a very similar situation where the backyard drains into a small swell that then goes to our system. So we maintain part of it, but we don't maintain all of it because it actually starts on private property and then enters into a system that the city maintains. The, I mentioned that we have 125 miles of ditches, 86 miles of pipe, and just under 5,000 structures. We maintain these in the streets department. We have 12 personnel in Palbo. Now, they're typically focused on streets, you know, sidewalks, curb and gutter, pothole repair, crack sealing, those kind of things. But when we have a large rainstorm that's forecasted, we'll break those people off or during the heavy rain, we'll break those people off and have them go clean out catch basins. Because again, with 5,000 structures and, you know, many of those in areas like Northwoods that have a lot of pine trees and pine needles, you know, that takes a lot of manpower and a lot of time. And as you know, especially anybody in this area that has a pine tree in their yard, those things continue to fall. In drainage structures, we have 11 personnel. They also focus on keeping those clean. But they also go in and repair those. Anytime that you have a catch basin that may have, you know, a crack or joints that are separating that allow water to penetrate through the side of the box, it creates a sinkhole or, you know, an area where dirt is being carried away. So we have to go and repair those so that we don't end up with problems either under the curving or between the curving and the sidewalk. And then we have 12 personnel, along with six day inmates, that are responsible for literally the open channels in the roadside ditches. So you're talking that 125 miles of open ditches. And what I will say, a lot of that maintenance was done or supplemented by inmate labor. Since March of last year, we have not had inmates. So we've had to try to keep most of our schedule using the existing workforce that we have. We have been able to relocate, I think, one or two temporary positions into stormwater. And we've been hiring maintenance workers on a temporary basis to help us keep up with that where we've lost that inmate later, labor. And as soon, you know, our plan is as soon as the prisons will allow us to get inmates again from the pandemic, we plan to start. The stormwater fund, and I'll talk a minute about where that comes from. This is the last three years of revenue expenditures for the stormwater fund. You can see in the first two years, we had a savings of revenue versus expenditures. But in fiscal year 19, we're running pretty close to our expenditures matching our revenue. So our stormwater fee that we receive, and I believe everybody's familiar with the $5 they pay every month if you're a, you know, a residential homeowner, is based on impervious surface area. When we looked at putting this in place, I believe it was in the 2006 or '07 timeframe, what we did is we took a random sample of lots in Jacksonville. And what we found is that the average of most of those lots that we looked at was around 2,850 square feet of impervious area. So our fee is based on $5 per month for every 2,850 square feet of impervious. So impervious would be, as a homeowner, you know, the driveway, the house, a patio if they have one, a storage shed, anything that water cannot go through. Decks are not included in that. And in some of the newer subdivisions, like Williamsburg as an example, where they've gone for low-impact development, you'll see the pervious concrete. You know, it's not a, it's a rough-looking concrete from a distance. When you get up close, you can actually see voids that allows the water to go through the concrete. They don't get a one-for-one credit, but I want to say it's a 50% credit or something for using pervious concrete. So there are some things that people can do to keep their BUA lower, especially when it comes to stormwater permitting. But we found that the average residential lot was roughly 2,850 square feet. We did that looking in all of the neighborhoods in the city. I know it sounds odd that it would be so close, but in many cases where you have larger houses, most of the time, they're going up because it's cheaper. So we've just found that that 2,850 square feet in the study was a good fit for Jacksonville. And then for a commercial development, it uses that same 2,850 square foot equivalent and we just divide their total impervious surface area. Now, there are some credits they can get if they oversize their stormwater pond and some of those things. But typically, it's a commercial development, you know, such as the mall, would pay for, you know, $5 per every 2,850 square feet of impervious surface that they have. One of the, or the largest payer into the stormwater fund is the city. The city pays for all of our city roadways, all of our city streets. And we pay that fee into the stormwater fund. So we are the single largest payer of the stormwater fee. So again, our drainage policy is that we, the city maintains the flow of stormwater runoff from city property and city streets. And again, we don't do, we can't do, I believe I said that correctly, we cannot go maintain private property with city funds. We can't or don't maintain NCDOT's drainage. But we do have a good working relationship with DOT. So when we find something, we report it to them and they're very good about coming out and making any repairs that are necessary. And we don't do stormwater ponds because those are required of commercial and private developments. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Curious. How much does the city end up paying itself for this?
Do you remember? Wish Gail was here. I want to say it's $300,000.
No, it's actually almost $450,000.
There you go. Maybe Gail will send that to me in a minute. Yes, sir.
In terms of the stormwater fund, is there a difference between houses that's on a slab and ones that has a crawl space under it?
No, sir. There is not. The stormwater fund, they pay, it's a flat fee for a residential unit. So whether they have, you know, a house built on stilts or they have a house built on a slab, or they have a circular driveway, they still pay the $5. It's a flat fee. And that was, we had a, when we put the, when we looked at putting this fee in place, we actually had a stormwater committee that had citizens sitting on that. And everybody felt for residential that the fat, flat fee was the best for residential.
Wow, can you go back to the Bell Fork Homes?
Yes, sir. And I'll ask Kevin if he can clear the screen of my scribbles.
What's looping around is Cole Drive, correct?
Yes, sir. This should be, so this should be Cole. This is the bypass. It's oriented a little bit off. This is, so it's north up. So this is Bell Fork. This should be Armstrong coming in. And then I believe King is at the bottom and then Carver, Kit.
And Armstrong.
And then Armstrong would be the last one, the highest one.
Okay, where you have, you have that, where it's feeding across from, actually from King over to Carver?
Yes, sir.
So is part of that private?
Yes, sir. So right here, I actually didn't know this existed until we went back out and looked after the last meeting. But right in this area... But right in this area, there's actually a pipe. And it's got a makeshift headwall under that circle that I just drew. And it intercepts water running along this ditch and actually brings it out toward the roadway. And it, it ties into the back of the catch basin. I'm not sure how that got put there or why it was there. But I, I honestly didn't even know that was there. But it actually intercepts water and brings it out toward the street.
So that belongs to a resident?
Yes, sir, it would belong to those two homeowners.
One of the things that's confusing to a lot of homeowners is they will look on their plat and they will see an easement. And just because there's an easement, they assume that it is dedicated to the public. Reminds you that when a plat is recorded and it has on there dedicated to the public, that doesn't mean that the public has accepted it. Now, in modern days, with the new plats and the new subdivision regulations, it's a little different. Let's take, for example, up at Carolina Forest. Carolina Forest has what they call a low-impact versus a high-impact water management permit. What does that mean? A high-impact is where you see a stormwater pond. High-impact is where practically everything is piped. It's brought to one point where it's, where it's treated. A good example of that is primarily commercial development. A good example of that is literally right next door to City Hall, here at the corner on the county's property, where they were going to build a building, so they put in a stormwater pond. That's high-impact. And as Wally said, we do not maintain that pond. What causes people confusion is like in Carolina Park, Carolina Forest. There are open ditches, there are easements there. People are told they cannot build in those easements. The city will even tell them they can't build in those easements. But guess what? The stormwater permit is not in the name of the city. It's in the name of the Carolina Forest Homeowners Association. So all of those ditches, which are taking the place of one central stormwater pond, create what's called low-impact. That means that the water is basically held almost exactly where it falls. And in those ditches, we have a lot of calls every year from people in Carolina Forest or other subdivisions, including Belfort Homes, where people say, need for you to send the city crew out here? This, you know, the weeds are high, the, I can't mow it, whatever. Homeowners Association responsibility. You know, it, it is difficult because the state set up the regulations on low-impact and high-impact water management controls. And when people pay their stormwater fee, they think, well, I'm paying that fee and you should come out here and clean this ditch. Well, you're paying that fee to offset your portion of the road surfaces, not the individual ditches. So it's no wonder that people all over the city do get confused. And I'll be quite frank with you, we get a lot of calls where people just don't understand. And most of the time, we're not able to give them the answer they want. Because the answer they want is, come pipe my ditch and keep this from ever happening again. So I think Wally's done a good job of walking you through the city policy. At the end of the day, it is confusing when you live in Belfort Homes and you see three ditches that are maintained by the city and two that are not. It really just comes down to, do they carry water from the city street? And if they don't, we don't maintain them. John, any additional thoughts?
Yes.
At some point, I need to know those addresses. Okay?
I can get those for you.
We'll talk about it. And thank you guys for what you've been doing out in Belfort Homes, by the way, too.
You're welcome.
Yeah, since the last meeting, I will tell you, the city staff has spent a lot of time in there checking all of the catch basins that are on the, on the city system, cleaning them out. Also, we have been looking at the discharge ditches. When I was out there with Mr. Jackson, I think on about a week after, maybe Monday a week ago, there was a lot of water standing in the ditches that the city does maintain. And what that meant was that somewhere further down, it was a clog. So our crews have been in there trying to clean that out. The other part is that we've also been in there in the last week and addressed several road issues. And I remind the public that in the upcoming paving, we will be paving, I believe it's King.
Yes, sir, it'll be King here, on the full length of King. And then in the, in FY '22, it will be the entrance on Cold Drive, at least to the first road intersection, maybe slightly past that, depending on how far we have to go to pick up the deteriorated sewer line. Which that's off this map at the top. Any other questions? Appreciate it.
Mayor, the last thing we would like to do is give you an update. As you know, Mr. Massey does an excellent job participating on your behalf with the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission. I think it's important, especially because we're a host city, to be up to date on what their thinking is. So I'd like Ron to give you a briefing on their last meeting, please.
Mayor, Council, I've taken what is a standard briefing that was put together by North Carolina Military Affairs Commission, was just really briefed at their last meeting. I've, I've hidden some of the slides. There's more detail in there that we need to spend for the presentation tonight. However, when you get the copy of the PowerPoints, you'll have the, the complete deck. And so you can look at more of the details of what's in there. And certainly, if you have any questions after tonight, I'd be glad to ask them. The current Military Affairs Commission was, was reorganized in 2013. And at the time, what they did is they changed its composition. Composition currently, under the current law, is 25 commissioners. That 13 of them are appointed by the governor, six by the House, six by the Senate. There are also 17 ex-official members. And all the host military cities, the five host military cities, Jacksonville, Havelock, Fayetteville, Goldsboro, and Elizabeth City, the mayors or their representatives are one of those 17 ex-official members. And, and so I just wanted you to know, they, they also try to have three members that represent a particular military host community area. Currently, for our area, one of the positions is vacant. That was a position that, that General Gaskin held before he became the Secretary of Veterans and Military Affairs, won by retired Sergeant Major Bill Hatcher. The, the third position, interestingly enough, is, is a retired Marine Colonel, but he's the mayor of Madison. And so he's not quite in our local area here, but he's certainly familiar about Marine business and that because he actually was involved in, in Marine Corps installations west before he retired from active duty. But the, of course, the goal here, as you can see on the slide, is, is to basically help support the military, goal of, of the commission. And of course, why, the military is very important in North Carolina. North Carolina is the fourth largest, has the fourth largest number of active-duty military of all the states. And that, you can see there are six installations where I talked about, about five of them. The, actually, we've got two technically that are in our area, five host cities, five military installations, and one Department of Homeland Security. And that's Elizabeth City with the Coast Guard there. And of course, there's all of our other military. And nowadays, the act, the reserves and the National Guard are, you know, almost as busy as our active-duty military with the, the missions that they're performing in support of the national security. The, the impact, it's the number-two business in the state. $66 billion, you know, and only second to agriculture in the state. So it's a very big business. And as you saw from the map, the, the majority of the act, or all the active-duty installations are on the east part of the state. And that presents part of a, some of the challenge as you try to get the whole state on board of the benefit of the military. And we'll talk a little bit more about that with the, the commission itself. You see, the second part of, of the, on this slide talks about getting the word out to everybody in North Carolina, especially when it comes to legislation. When legislation is needed in the, in the legislature, you know, you've got to have more than just the host military communities and their General Assembly representatives supporting it. And so the, the idea of, of telling our, all of our citizens how important the military is to the state's economy is a continuing challenge. And again, they're, the commission serves as the focal point for military issues in the state. They, they coordinate with our host cities and our military. They get input from the North Carolina Commander's Council. They basically try to work with the state agencies to get things adjusted, if need be, within their authority or then to have to actually propose legislation to the General Assembly. And of course, they're trying to, we're trying to also take advantage of the military's presence here from an economic development standpoint, getting other industries to come in the state, industries that play a role in supporting the military. There are, there are four basic pillars that sort of, you know, establish the framework in which the Military Commission operates. And these represent four committees that they have. So they take the commission members and they divide them onto the four committees. And, and they're focused on those particular major areas. And I'm going to quickly go through each one of them and what their priorities are for this current strategic plan. Installation Mission Sustainability, that happens to be the committee that our host cities are involved in. And because it has to do with issues that revolve right around the base, the idea of encroachment and, and of course, being able, the installations being able to operate, especially when you talk about the resilience after hurricanes, roads, things like that. And so these are the priorities for the Installation and Mission Sustainability Committee. There's an Economic Development Committee. And one of the big things there you see is workforce development. Well, our own NC for me, which Kimberly, of course, was involved in getting going statewide, is a, is a piece of the, the workforce development. The commission actually provides some funding support to NC for me so that they continue to try and, and help veterans and employers in North Carolina get hooked up so we benefit by having retiree, or retirees and those that leave the military staying in North Carolina. The Quality of Life Committee, they work on a lot of the, the issues having to do with concerns that military family members may have being stationed in North Carolina, whether it's they can't enroll children in school before they physically, you know, come to their next military assignment, things like that. The quality of the education. And of course, that's all a function of, of an individual county. And that, and, and so there's sometimes some processes that have to be improved and streamlined to basically address some of these issues. One of the big things is the military. And matter of fact, in this year's National Defense Authorization Act, the military has got to come back to Congress and talk about report cards for areas where military bases are when it comes to them expanding the mission at a base. You know, they want to make sure that all the, the necessary support is there, you know, before they, they add missions to a base. And this is also something that finds its way into the BRAC process. So anyhow, Quality of Life's focused on that. And legislative and the state agency coordination, there, when you, when you do need to work with the, the state legislature, you know, this is where this committee kind of works on developing the strategy, helping find support, you know, for, among elected officials in the General Assembly to, to in fact, you know, introduce legislation. And then the commission itself needs to help by getting the word out so that the, the elected officials will in fact, you know, have support from their community in supporting some of the military-related legislation. The Strategic Communication and Advocacy, this is just really established kind of ad hoc group that's trying to basically get the message out about the value of the military to the state. Again, I mentioned BRAC. You know, they always talk about BRAC. The, the commission plays a key role in helping one prepare our bases so that they can in fact, you know, not so much survive, but can successfully go through a BRAC process and not lose missions or actually the installation. And, and there's discussions now with the change of administration that there may be more support for conducting a BRAC and that. So it's even more important now to focus on some of the key things that the Military Affairs Commission sees as detrimental things that the state needs to work on. And the sooner you can get to that, the better it is when you start a BRAC process. This, this is where, how the MAC uses their funding. They've been getting $1 million a year. And they, and they use in a combination of ways. You know, we've got a grant one of the years to help build our monitoring wells that help monitor the aquifer. But things like that, this is how the, the MACs uses the funds that they receive from the legislature. And there's a summary of what we talked about as far as what the BRAC, what the Military Affairs Commission, what role they provide for the, in support of the state. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Like I said, there's some detailed slides on some implementation tasks that each of the committees is working on for this year. That's in the full deck. And we just didn't take the time tonight to go over that. That concludes my presentation, Mayor, thank you.
Nice job, Ron. Any questions, Ron? Thank you, Ron.
Counsel, we have a very short One City moment. We have some slides relative to Winterfest. So Kevin, if y'all can pull those up, please. The weather was ideal for snow sledding and ice skating. Unfortunately, the pandemic resulted in us not having the 7, 8, or 9,000 people we normally have. This occurred last weekend at the, actually, two weekends ago, the 20th, at the Commons. A lot of good participation, but on a very limited basis. We're looking forward to having the jamboree come up in May. Again, we are probably going to be under the pandemic, so we're going to have to come up with ways to have larger crowds, but to have them well-regulated. But you can see that the activities this year, the number of participants was limited. But again, we thank you for providing the funds for this all-free event. Susan and her staff are to be commended. Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Same move.
Second.
I mean, here.